And the Borough Manager just said it's going to come up briefly in his report.
I think we're kind of spread.
We're a little mixed up to try to social distance.
I'm in my seat.
I don't know.
Did you get here first?
No, I think Helen was here first.
I'm going to call to order the Borough of Morrisville Borough Council meeting for Monday, October 19th. Please rise for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Bowers?
Here.
Councilman Drysbrock?
Here. Here.
Councilman Ted Parker?
Here.
Councilman Paul?
Here.
Councilman Robinson?
Here.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Here.
Scott Robinson's trying to.
Councilman Jaeger?
Here.
Is there a borough prosecutor with us?
Yes, Scott Hallibur is here.
All right, thank you. And Borough Manager, okay, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if it's going to work or not.
Can you put the laptop to the other side and use that microphone on the other side?
Well, we tried, but it was doing the same thing when I was using Ted's.
No, I think he turned that one on. That's when it started doing it again.
All right, well, let me try it.
Worth a shot, because I'd like to hear this week.
Is it 468332?
Uh, yeah, that sounds reasonable.
We'll see in a minute.
Okay, uh, we're going to move on to item four, which is announcements and presentations. Do we have any? I don't see anybody here.
Ms. Sherlock, is our presentation happening?
No, I actually texted you about that. She can't make it this evening. She'd like to be on the agenda for next week. I mean, next month, I'm sorry, next month.
Okay.
I thought I got something to Ted as well.
We will reschedule.
Sorry about that.
Okay. All right, five is public comment. Anybody from the public of which is to speak?
Is he able to get in there?
Okay, seeing none. Moving on to item six, which is approval of the minutes, six A. Approval of the minutes for the Borough Council regular meeting of July 20th, 2020. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Seven is the.
Do we have a count on that of who voted? Is Scott online yet?
No, so it's seven zero. Seven, finance, seven A is the treasurer's report. And do we have a treasurer's report or no?
468332.
All right, seven B, a call for a motion to approve the bill list and pay the bills. I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I had a quick question for Borough Manager, but it's not important. I'll ask him later.
Okay.
I do, I'm not sure. I guess Scott would have to answer it, though.
Give us one second, we're having some issues.
I will.
Oh, this might be him, is he on?
Yeah, I just got in, it wasn't working before Scott.
Okay.
Yep, we got you, we were still troubleshooting.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the bill list and pay the bills. There are some questions for the Borough Manager.
I have a question. It's the General Ledger 2009 11515. It's under street lighting, the Arm and Sons, the $32,000 bit electric.
Yeah, we've had that question from several of you. That was a motor vehicle accident that occurred at North Pennsylvania and Trenton Avenue. I guess I should speak into the microphone. North Pennsylvania and Trenton Avenue, and it took out the control box for that traffic signal. So Armor &amp; Sons had the emergency respond and do a temporary hookup, and then came back and did the full hookup. So that's going to be covered through insurance, and insurance will attempt to subrogate against the party at fault.
Okay, so we should get full recovery, though, right?
We've already gotten full recovery from insurance, it's just a matter of insurance getting full recovery from the party at fault.
From the person, right, okay. And then, I have a question also. The different, the General Ledger 2009 11569, and it's the Williamson Park Playground Improvement, this is the C2P2 grant. What exactly are they still doing down there?
I don't think they're doing much of anything with that grant, because we've kind of put it temporarily on hold.
But there was a fee for $812 this month?
Yeah.
A charge?
Yeah.
Okay. So what is that for?
I don't know. If you want, I'll pull the invoice later, and you can have a copy of it, but for the most part, that grant has, that C2P2 grant has been put temporarily on hold until we see what happens with Mr. McGrath.
Okay. And then, I have a, well, I guess you could call it a request. It's, you know, one of our, one of our funds is called the Historic Summer Seat Improvements, and I think that's where, you know, a large chunk of the, one of the grants went to. But we don't own Summer Seat, and I just think it should be renamed to be Truer. And while I'm at it, I'm going to ask the question that there were some questions about work being done at Summer Seat over the summer. And I was just wondering, but I inquired to Ted about it, he said that it was kind of folded into last year's grant somehow. And I'd just like to make a statement now that we should not be using any Borough money or grant money tied into our money to do something on private property.
Do you want to clarify before I do?
No, you clarified first.
Well, first, the only reason we got that grant was because of the interest in Summer Seat, and that's why it was titled as such. Second, no Borough money or Borough grant funds have been appropriated or used for anything to do with Summer Seat specifically or their property. So whatever you heard or wherever you heard it, that's incorrect.
And Mr. Mitchell, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that the only thing that the Borough does for Summer Seat is remove garbage, correct? And that's been a longstanding for decades, is my understanding, that we cover their trash bill.
I believe that's correct, yes.
Okay. But that's been going on for decades, that's nothing new.
Mike Jaeger had stated that the only thing service-wise that the Borough does directly for Summer Seat is we provide trash collection at that location.
So you don't have any idea who did the, all the work there this summer?
No, no, I have no idea. I know some work took place, you know, some restoration work, something to do with shutters and some other work.
Shutters and windows and.
Yeah, that had nothing to do with us.
Resurfacing?
Yeah.
Okay, well, that.
I would direct those questions to Summer Seat's board.
Okay.
Yeah.
So until this, until this grant is over, I guess it will remain Historic Summer Seat Improvements?
Yep, it's going to stay named that way, because that was the name of the project on the grant application and how it was awarded. So until the project is completely closed out and the final audit is done and it's finito, it's going to, it's going to stay that way.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mitchell, I noticed there was about $1,000 spent on postage. And I know since you've got here, we've been going more paperless and more paperless. Is there, is it still in the works, and is there ways to reduce costs for postage?
The $1,000, I believe you're referring to on postage, was to reload postage onto the postage meter.
Yeah.
Because we use it, the municipal authority uses it, the police department uses it.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, you know, the cost is allocated over the various departments based on their usage.
Okay.
Is that the Pitney Bowes machine?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Virginia, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbrock?
Yes.
Councilwoman Laalholm?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
And Councilman Jaeger?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes eight zero. Move on to reports. Eight A is the Mayor's report. Mayor's not here, so we'll move on to eight B, Police Chief's report.
Is the police chief here?
Yes.
Yes, he is.
We got a little backfeed?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, good evening, council. Few things on the agenda. We have the election coming up in a few weeks. Just to let you know, we will have extra officers working that day. They, I know what the rules are, I know how far they have to be away, but we will have extra officers. The county is still evaluating security for that day. There is a lot of talk that we're going to put a MUR team up. There's talk about the county putting detectives out there along with district attorneys, but everything is still being evaluated at this point. We just don't know what that day is going to look like. Halloween, we will have, as always, we will have extra patrols out there. I'll be out there on my bike like I usually am. Hopefully that night turns out as well as everyone has before. The only other thing I need to talk about is I see on the agenda putting GPSs in the vehicles. No one's discussed that with the police department. So with that being said, I just want to let you know that there are no departments in Bucks County that have GPS on their vehicles. I see real no value in putting GPS on vehicles in a two-mile borough. It promotes a distrust of your employees by saying that you need to monitor them. They're supervised pretty well as it is. Who's going to have access to this GPS to be able to look at where these vehicles are? The police department should only be monitored by myself and the mayor as daily activities, just through day-to-day operations. But I, like I said, I see no value in this. John Leiter and I have spoke at length. This is something we can't afford. This is going to cost you a lot of money, and neither one of us can see the value in such a system. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. HC, Manages Report?
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing I have to add tonight, other than what council has already received, is that there was a meeting recently with Mr. McGrath and representatives of Select Morrisville LLC. They would like to come in for an updated conceptual presentation to council on, similar to what was presented back in August of last year. They've requested the November council meeting, and we've tentatively agreed to that. We wanted to check with you all tonight to make sure that that was okay with you.
I'm good.
So am I.
Okay, hearing no objection. It'll be on your November agenda.
Okay. Moving on to eight D, which is Committee Reports. Does anybody have anything?
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Excuse me. I have a, I have a question for Mr. Mitchell. I was going to wait till the end, but it could have been part of his report. That meeting that you went to with the, oh, about the facility, the composting facility, McGill Falls?
Yes.
Did they discuss anything about any odor from the composting?
They did. They actually believe that the odor will be even less noticeable, because it's, their operations are primarily going to be enclosed and indoors.
Okay. So, all right, thank you.
All right, moving on to eight D, Committee Reports. Does anybody have a report they want to give?
See committee meeting in July. I'm sorry that this report is kind of late, but we were talking about Park Avenue and using the dike. And so Scott Robinson and I, Justin, I don't think you attended the.
There wasn't one where there was one.
Oh, it was on the calendar. So, but we went down to Park Avenue to take a look at it.
Oh, okay, sorry.
So there were, so what we noticed was that there's three entrances to the dike from Bridge Street, which goes from Bridge Street to halfway down Park Avenue, and then the next entrance is actually in Williamson Park. So the signage is kind of small, and it's barely noticeable at night. And it's also, there is nothing that states that there's going, there's a fine for being at the park. So if you're on the dike, there's nothing that says, you know, you're going to be fined if we, you know, if we find you on the, on the park, on the dike. You know, all it says is that the park is closed, which is the dike the park? I know we know it is, but do regular people know it is? So I'm wondering if we can change the signage and enhance the signage to say, you know, you will be fined if you're on the dike, et cetera, et cetera. So that is our recommendation to council regarding the Park Avenue. And then we wanted to know also, maybe the chief could answer this, if maybe there could be some foot patrols during the summertime, during the evening hours, in order to get some of the people off the dike that are doing things they shouldn't be.
Councilwoman Laalholm, will there be any minutes from that meeting from July?
I have them here. I'll send them off to Borough Manager, so that everyone can have them.
Great, thank you.
So Chief, do you think we, in the summertime hours, that the dike could get some foot patrols?
This isn't appropriate.
So we were, yeah, I understand. So we were talking about the dike and the activity that happens in the summertime on the dike on Park Avenue, with the garbage and the condoms that are found, and the little baggies that are found. So we were wondering, as we took a walk down there, if during the summertime hours, maybe from April through September, if there could be some foot patrols that walk between the park and Bridge Street, so that if somebody is sitting up there and doing anything, that they could be kind of shooed away? I'm sorry?
Empire permits it, I'll go.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Thank you, Helen. That's considered, if it's considered part of the park, our parks are dawn to dusk. So maybe could we, if we're going to do signage, would it make any sense to put it at so-called entrances, or a small sign by each bench, just saying the park is closed from dawn to dusk? I mean, those are the rules that are out on Delmore Avenue. So it's just a thought. I don't know what the signage ideas were, but that's my understanding. It's closed from, is that correct? It's open from dawn to dusk? Am I right? Yeah, okay. Thanks, I'm sorry. I see Scott nodding. So I guess that would, that's, it's just a suggestion. And that's it, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So typically, the vacant properties committee only meets once a quarter. However, in addition to our September meeting, we did meet in October for a specific reason, to officially blight the Stockton Building. And I believe at this point, and Mr. Mitchell, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that's now with our planning commission?
Yes, it is. It's on their agenda for this month.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
After, we could talk to you afterwards. Not appropriate, but up to the present.
Yeah, it'll be better at the end. All right, moving on to action items. Nine A, a call for a motion to adopt the 2020 Halloween policy. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, I do. I'm sorry. I know that the one that we've been doing for years was sent out, but I was going to suggest, but I don't need to suggest it, because the Bucks County Board of Health sent us something. And theirs seems a little, it really addresses COVID, and it's a little more detailed. Does anybody have the, does anybody feel like accepting the Bucks County Board of the House trick-or-treat rules for this, or do you want to go back to what the Borough normally does?
Can I sure offer a little guidance? The one that the Borough always does addresses general.
Times.
Public safety advisory for the event of Halloween. The county, which is in charge of public health, the Bucks County Department of Public Health, issued a Halloween advisory strictly and directly related to trick-or-treating activities related to COVID-19. So we weren't going to combine or overlap the two. Certainly, you can adopt or endorse or recommend what the county has already issued, but it's kind of already out there. So I just wanted to explain the different perspectives of the two.
Would anybody consider that we just add to the one that is ours, just note at the bottom saying that we are suggesting that you follow the recommendations from the Bucks County Board of Health regarding Halloween? Then they would have to look them up, or is that useless?
I mean, I think the information's out there pretty good. I think the Borough even posted that information when the Borough received it, so I don't really think that we need to duplicate efforts with what the county's already doing. It's not going to hurt anything, I just don't think it's going to help either.
Yeah. All right, anyone else?
Well, if that's the way everyone feels.
Yeah, I think we're just going to.
Yeah, I agree with Mike.
Keep the motion as is. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, no.
You're a no?
I'm a no, sorry.
Motion passes seven one. Nine B, a call for a motion to adopt the proposed 2021 budget. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it, just to move it forward. Any discussion?
A quick question for Mr. Mitchell. I was curious to see if there was any change in what the recent one that you sent out. And I see there were some on, in tab two. There was an addition of, I think it was eight thousand, twenty, actually, 23,974 in administrative, and 8,776 in, for the police department. So.
Actually, I think that's reversed. The higher number went into the police budget, and the lower number went to admin.
You're right, I apologize, yes.
In anticipation of council moving forward with this GPS system for vehicles. If that doesn't happen, then we can pull that out.
Oh, was that what that was? Okay, I was curious what that was. Now, when I added those two numbers that you added, though, it came to 32,741, but at the bottom, right, you have 7,000, 7,503322, that comes to a $40,000 difference. So I'm just curious what that extra $8,000 was.
Well, the other adjustment that was made was we lowered the estimated cost of healthcare, our annual healthcare increase, based on advice from our insurance broker. We were expecting around a 13% to 15% increase, and we lowered it to 10.
Okay. And just real quick, there was also a change made on the rec fund?
Yes.
Is that where you took it from, or that's just?
No, the change we made to the rec fund was council had approved at a prior meeting the movie nights in the park. So that projected cost was added to the rec fund. Yep.
Okay.
Anyone else?
If I may. So I was pretty verbal about this when. If I may. So I was pretty verbal about this when we had our finance committee meeting, but since there hasn't been any, any minutes distributed and it wasn't very heavily attended, I do have concerns with the budget. I know this is a preliminary. I get that. And there still needs to be work done to it. But as we discussed, and this is not a lack of confidence in Mr. Mitchell, I have nothing but the utmost confidence in him. But I do not like this budget because what we're doing is we're adding revenues to support monies due next year. Well, not next year, the following year. What I mean by that is since we, since we run low on funds, what we're doing, what we're looking to do is raise taxes to ensure that we have money for the first quarter of the following year. This isn't a need for the current year. And I have a concern with doing that all at once. I get if we were going to tier it and do it over a couple of years to get ourselves in a better financial position, but to put that on the taxpayers in one year, I think is a mistake. So I had, that's my major issue. And again, I know this is preliminary and there's still work to be done on this thing, but that's where I am with it.
Could I just clarify?
Please.
Something. You're essentially correct in everything you said. I just wanted to clarify that this is not new.
I know.
This is a longstanding budgeting practice and not only in Morrisville, but virtually everywhere, where municipality has to try to squeeze 15 to 16 months out of a 12-month budget because we don't get property tax revenue until April over the following year.
So. And I'm not even, that's not even my concern. It's my concern is doing it all at once. I 100% agree with you that needs to happen. As a matter of fact, we need more, we need more bandwidth in our budget beyond that. I'm with you there. My concern is doing it all in one year.
Anyone else? Virginia, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dreisbach?
No.
Councilwoman Lawal?
No.
Councilman Parker?
No.
Councilman Paul?
No.
Councilman Robinson?
No.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
No.
And Councilman Yeager?
No.
Okay, motion fails. 1-7.
So Scott, is it possible for you, because you asked for the increase, is it possible for you to give an outline to us for our budget meeting next week of what wouldn't get done if we kept revenue, our budget flat?
I can, I can also, but what I can't do is predict when the Borough will run out of money to operate.
And I think it's a mistake to think we can run flat. We ran flat the last couple of years and that was pointed out in the, in the finance committee meeting, but that council made adjustments to the spending. You can't remain flat and add costs. You can't do that. You have to, you have to increase taxes if you want to increase spending. We reduce spending to be able to remain flat. And this council hasn't done that.
And if I could just clarify, it hasn't been a couple of years. It's been four years.
Yes.
Since there was a property tax increase.
That's correct.
Okay. Move on to 9C, a call for a motion to adopt the 2021 fee schedule. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any discussion?
I took, I took a look at that fee schedule and I also pulled up the Yardley Borough's fee schedule. And I know everyone has always said that we had been the lowest and now that we're on par with the neighboring communities, but I don't find that to be the case. I found that Yardley Borough has lower fees on some of the line items. So the fee schedule that we currently have is that been given to us from Keystone?
It originated with them two or three years ago when we asked them to do a survey and assessment, which they came back to us with a whole report. But the changes we've been making to it on an annual basis, we've been doing.
Okay.
And actually, I believe the only substantive change we've made for 2021 is adjusting the fee for sanitation. So the fees are essentially the same as current year.
So can we do any kind of analysis to see if those fees are still in line with neighboring communities?
We can. When would you want that by? Because that's a time-consuming effort.
Well, I mean, we could, well, I'm not sure because everyone has to vote on this, but you could, we could continue with the current fees. However, at some point when the analysis is done, then we could make a motion. I don't know how this would work to adjust the fees. Like, do we have to pass this fee schedule? Or can we just continue as it is and then make changes when we take a look?
You can continue with the current fee schedule as long as you want, but you're going to tank your sanitation fund.
I see.
Yeah.
How long do you think it would take to do an analysis?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I couldn't give you an answer right now.
So if we pass this because of the sanitation fee, can we adjust it mid-year if we find that it, we want to?
Oh, sure. The fee schedule can be changed by the gavel anytime council wants to.
Okay, all right. So it's not just once a year?
There was one year, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, we did two or three mid-year changes.
Okay. All right, then I'm fine with that. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Mr. Parker, I have a question, if Mr. Mitchell knows. The landscaping contractors, the contract is, it's $100. Do they, is that for as many times as they wish to use our leaf stump? Do they get multiple uses out of that? You know?
John, do you recall? Yes. One-time fee, one-time registration fee.
So every time they go in, it's $100?
Yes.
Okay.
No, it's, it's a one-time fee.
It's a one-time fee.
They pay it once.
Oh, they just pay it once and use it whenever?
One-time fee, yes.
Okay.
John, do a lot of landscape contractors use that? Or is it primarily individual residents? It's primarily individual residents, not landscape contractors.
Okay. And one other question. Do you, do you recall the fair share? Remember, I think I had asked at the budget meeting, for apartment complexes, is it one, it's not one for every unit, is it? Or is it? Or is it just one large amount for the actual complex?
One large amount for the actual complex, but it might be indexed based on the number of units in that complex. I don't recall off the top of my head, but we can find out for you.
Okay, so I'll check on that later this week, maybe. Okay. Thank you.
Should be outside the meeting.
What else? Virginia, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dreisbach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Lawal?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
No.
Councilman Paul?
No.
Councilman Robinson?
No.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
No.
And Councilman Yeager?
Yes.
On my calculation, we have a tie.
Is that for what?
And no mayor.
And no mayor, so.
Yes, 10 days, right?
Yes.
Right, yes.
Okay, well.
Thank you, Scott.
Pass it to the mayor and hopefully he can render a decision or we'll be voting on it again next month.
Can you speak up a little, Ted?
I'm sorry, it's my mask.
Yeah, I know.
I said we'll pass it along to the mayor for, for his decision. And if not, he won't consider it, then we'll have to revisit it next month. All right, we're going to move on to 9D, a call for a motion to acknowledge receipt of $46,388.04 from the PA Department of Auditor General and to approve distribution of 100% to the Volunteer Firefighters Relief Association.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 8-0. 90, a call for a motion to adopt a use policy for the lower-level meeting room of the public library. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion? Hearing none, motion fails for lack of movement.
So I have a question on this. I read the rules. It doesn't really state who can use the library, if everyone can use the library, or if it's denied to certain people. Like, in the past, political parties could not use it. So has that been lifted? Because it doesn't really state anything. It just says you can rent it.
Yeah, if you're putting it to the public for rent, I don't think you can discriminate against what groups use it, as long as it conforms with your policy.
Okay. And then the other problem I had.
If I could have a point of order real quick. If we don't have a motion and a second, we don't have a motion and we shouldn't be in discussion because otherwise, we, I think it might be a sunshine law violation because we're discussing something that now isn't on our agenda.
Oh, okay.
I don't think that's a sunshine law violation.
I could be wrong. All right.
It's already failed.
Well, it didn't, it didn't fail because it wasn't voted on.
It wasn't moved.
There was no discussion.
Well, it wasn't, nobody moved it. So it failed for that reason.
Yeah, that's correct. Because there was no motion to move it on, we should be moving upon to the next agenda item.
So you can ask at the end of the night.
Okay, that's when I'll do that. Thanks, Nance.
All right, moving on to 9F, call for a motion to create a part-time code enforcement officer position.
So moved.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Could somebody clarify what the position will entail? What the functions of this individual will be?
There was a job description in our packet.
Yep. But for the, for the public's knowledge, can we please have somebody verify what this position would, would be entailing? Yep, qualifications, duties.
I would just like to comment that ahead of time, I'll let you know that I don't think we need a part-time person. I think we need a full-time person. So I'll be voting no.
Anyone else? Do we know, is this, is this a replacement?
Ms. Sherlock about being a full-time as opposed to part-time. But query, Mr. Chairman, or Mr. President, in that case, should we vote against the motion? Or should we, or can we discuss amending the motion to full, part-time or full-time?
I'll refer to our solicitor for that one.
I'm sorry, I was having trouble hearing you. Can you repeat that? Yeah, Mr. Holber, I was asking, I agree with Ms. Sherlock's comment concerning, I prefer part, that I think we need a full-time as opposed to a part-time code enforcement officer. And I'm just questioning, therefore, should I follow Ms. Sherlock's suggestion and vote against the motion altogether?
These taxes, the duties, salaries.
Or might we, can we amend the motion for, to encompass full-time as well as part-time so we can make that determination as we go through the process? Okay, now I understand. Okay. Yeah, so if you wanted to amend it to increase the, change the type of position, you would need to make a motion for an amendment to the motion that was made. It would require a second. It would then entail a vote on that amendment prior to a final vote on the actual full-time position. So you would need a vote to amend it to a full-time position and then a vote, either approving or disapproving of the position in general.
Mr. Holber?
Yes.
Is it not also possible that the maker of the motion can, she can make the amendment?
Yes, anyone, anyone at this time could make the amendment if they would like. But the motion is there, it's been seconded. Therefore, the motion's on the table. So you would still need a second for the motion unless both the first and second, both the person who made the motion and.
Both agree, right.
Both agree to withdraw it, then you could make an entirely new motion. That is correct, yes.
And we do have a second. I just didn't hear who it was.
Scott, I missed it.
But I'll make the motion to amend, I'll make a motion to amend the motion to, to provide for hiring, consider hiring a full-time code enforcement officer. Is there a second?
I'll second that. The other one's still on the table, though, right?
Right. First, we got, well, you tell, you tell me, Mr. Holber. So what's, so if anyone would like to withdraw, if the person who made the motion and the person who seconded both can agree, they can withdraw that. However, right now, there isn't a motion on the table, yes, for a part-time position. Mr. Paul has now made a motion to change it to a full-time position. So right now, you would be, there was a motion and a second from Ms. Sherlock. So therefore, you would be discussing right now, changing it from a full-time, or changing, excuse me, from a part-time to a full-time position. If that motion, if that motion prevails, that amendment, then the motion that you go back to that's still on the table would just be the motion to hire that position as amended.
Well, at this point, we haven't had a code enforcement person in-house. And I believe that it should be part-time to start. And if we find that the duties are overwhelming and then we could change it to full-time. But I am not going to amend, I am not going to take my motion back.
Fair enough.
All right, so we have a motion to amend the original motion. So in order to move forward, I understand that we need to vote on this to at least remove that from the table.
We have one on the table.
Mr. Holber, would not Helen's first and second, would that not take precedent? And that has to be voted on first?
No, the, you're making a motion to amend a prior motion, therefore.
Right.
Motion to amend it has the, has the, the amending motion. Yes, you have to amend it, yes.
Okay.
Right.
That's it.
All right. So if I understand this right, we, right now, we have to address the motion to amend the original motion to change the position to a full-time position. And we have a, we have a motion and a second on amending that. So let's do a roll call on that, Virginia?
Can I ask a question before?
Sure, can.
Scott, what is your opinion on, on that? Do you think that we should start off with a part-time? Or do you think we should just go straight into full-time?
I guess if council's determined to go in this direction, I would probably start with a part-time.
Okay. That's what I feel. Because this way, if we have a part-time and we feel that it's not working out, we can make changes much easier, correct, Scott? If, otherwise, if he was a full-timer, it's much more difficult to make changes.
If it's overtime.
Anyone else? Virginia, roll call, please. This is on the amendment.
Yes. Councilman Bowers?
No.
Councilwoman Dreisbach?
No.
Councilman Parker?
No.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Did she skip over me?
Councilman Robinson?
Oh, no.
Councilwoman Lawal?
No.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
And Councilman Yeager?
No.
Okay, the motion to amend it to a full-time position fails. 6-2 in the nose. So then we go back to the original motion, which is, well, already been moved and seconded, right? So I don't have to redo that, solicitor?
That's correct. That's correct.
Just checking. All right, so it's a call for a motion to create a part-time code enforcement officer position. It's already been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Can we have further discussion since we went into the amendment?
I'll allow it. Can we have some further discussion if anyone wishes to add anything? Can we have some further discussion if anyone wishes to add anything?
I have a statement, I don't know who I'd ask the question to because council's making this decision, but it seems that if we create a part-time code enforcement officer position, we're either getting rid of Keystone as their code enforcement duties, or we're limiting them and using this person we may hire. So with this decision, we're essentially going in with a hybrid solution for our code enforcement department because this zone, this code enforcement officer position did not include any type of fire marshal services or zoning officer and zoning experience, I don't believe. So is that true? Is that, would that be a true statement of what I'm saying?
Also permits.
Well, I mean, may I?
Yes.
It's hard to question to answer. Mr. Bowers, we drafted what council requested us to draft as a sample. We don't know who may apply for the position and what credentials or licenses they may have. If they have credentials or licenses beyond what's included in the draft of the job description, you know, we can bob and weave a little bit, but it's, you know, it's tough for me to answer the question sitting right here, right now.
All right, one more quick question. Do you foresee this being a one-to-one replacement where we would hire one person that replaces all of Keystone?
No, no. You will never hire anyone full-time or part-time that has every license and credential required, especially electrical, you know, your essential UCC functions. So no matter what you do, you're still going to have to dedicate an outside resource for that, whether it's Keystone or someone else.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Hearing nothing else. Virginia, roll call, please.
Yes. Councilman Bowers?
No.
Councilwoman Drysbox?
No.
Councilwoman Lavoie?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
Yes.
And Councilman Yeager?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes six to two. All right. Moving on to 9G. Call for a motion to adopt an amendment to the zoning ordinance to change the determination of family contained in section 465-6. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion.
I guess, yes, please. I'd just like to comment that the Bucks County Planning Commission suggested that we do not use the language that we are proposing with regards to family, the definition of family, and for that reason, again, I'll be voting no. They said the proposed definition of family caps the number of unrelated individuals to three. To comply with the Fair Housing Act amendments, we do not recommend that the definition of family be amended to distinguish between related and unrelated persons and place limitations on the number of persons. That came from the Bucks County Planning Commission. But the other facets they were in agreement with, that's the obsolete terms that we're changing. Handicap is not really one used anymore, and the common area is criteria. So, thank you.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. I oppose. It's Nancy.
Motion passes seven, one. Call for a motion to authorize the sale of borough-owned property located at 30 Hillcrest Avenue, parcel ID number 24-009-045, to authorize the issuance of a written notice to the tenant pursuant to the terms of the lease agreement, and to authorize the administration to enter into an agreement with the Bucks County Redevelopment Authority for redevelopment of the property. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye. No, Nancy.
You're a no?
I'm a no.
All right, motion passes seven, one. 9L. Call for a motion to approve Planning Commission Resolution PC-2019-03 to blight the property of 506 Hillcrest Avenue, TPM number 24-004-614 pursuant to the urban redevelopment law. Can I have a motion?
Just to clarify, that's 9I. I know it looks like an L, but it's an I.
Yep, it is, you're right, correct. Sorry, it's 9I.
No problem.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes eight, zero. 9J. Call for a motion to authorize the administration to install GPS tracking devices on all borough vehicles at an initial estimated cost of $3,780 and an annual cost of $7,200 in authorizing the borough manager to execute the necessary documents. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Do you want to do this by affirmation or roll call?
Discussion.
Oops, sorry, getting ahead of myself. Discussion.
So we'll be creating policies with this also? If we do vote yes for this, then there will be policies that if someone does something outside of where they're supposed to be, correct? Head?
National, yeah.
It would have to be.
It would have to.
It would have to be, otherwise they would be worthless.
Correct, okay, I'm just verifying.
I would think you'd have multiple policies. One, you'd have to update the employee manual-
Right.
-to include this, and the second would be a policy for accessing and storing the data that's generated by this.
Right, and then the reports that are run and shared on a monthly basis as well, correct? Okay, well, I mean, we can discuss all that. First, we have to do this. So it's just an annual cost of $7,200. First year, it would be the additional $3,700, but otherwise, on a recurring basis, it's $7,200. Okay.
All right, let's do a roll call vote on this, Virginia.
Mr. President, I had a question.
Okay, I didn't know.
Scott, is this your doing? Is this something you want as an administrative tool?
No, actually, I circulated this idea initially back in 2018, and we discussed it heavily internally, including with the police chief. And at the time, I ruled it out because I didn't think the benefit was worth the cost. And I'm actually still of the view that I don't think the benefit is worth the cost, given the size of our town and the size of our small fleet. I get that it can be a useful tool. I know some municipalities use it. But again, I think we have other priorities. So no, I did not advance this. This came up at some committee meeting, I forget which one, and came up, a council member asked me to update the information from 2018, which I did.
Okay, another question for you. Do all the Public Works employees have borough cell phones? Just curious, I don't know whether they do or not.
No, they don't.
Okay. Only because my thought was that cell phones already have built-in GPS in their software that can monitor those, it might be a cheaper router, an alternative.
Okay.
Mr. Parker?
Yes?
I can just make two comments, actually. If there has been abuse of this, then I'd like that to be brought forward, and then maybe that's what we- And you don't have to go too far to be outside of Marsville. I mean, if they go to the Wawa, they're outside of Marsville. So I'm just not, I feel the same way Scott does. I don't know that this is something that, with many priorities and the fact that we were looking at eight mil increase, that we should be thinking about this.
If I may, Mr. Parker?
Good.
So it sounds like everyone's focused on the big brother aspect of this. For me, this is more about safety of the equipment and making sure we can track and know where our equipment is if it's lost. This isn't just vehicles, this is equipment, too. So-
No, this is just vehicles.
We talked about equipment, too, though.
No.
No?
This cost is based on what I originally considered in 2018 and what I was asked to refresh for the purposes of this meeting, and that covers registered, licensed, and insured motor vehicles owned by the borough.
So this doesn't include trailers or anything like that? Okay, so my understanding was it included everything? So we're not GPSing any of the other equipment?
Nope.
Okay, then I have a problem with it, too, then. Because for me, this was more about being able to track our equipment. This wasn't about being able to say, you know, one of the guys from Public Works drove, you know, an extra mile out of town because they might be working for the MMA. You can't make that assumption. Police officer might be on a call and backing up Lower Makefield. You can't make the assumption just because they went out of the boundaries that they're not on the job. So for me, this wasn't about that. This was about making sure we could track our equipment and not lose any. So, yeah, it was about asset management. So if that's not what this is, then I have an issue with it, too, even though it's my, even though I put up a motion. Thank you for bringing that out.
Can you revise the costs? Like if we tabled this, can you revise the cost to include-
I think we should just vote it. If he wants to bring something else back, he can. Let's just vote it as is.
I didn't bring this, so I'd prefer not to bring it back unless council wants to reconsider this. Again, we considered this pretty heavily back in 2018 and looked at multiple options and looked at prices and discussed it internally, and that's why we never elevated it to council is we felt internally that the benefit was not worth the cost.
Okay.
I mean, it's, you know, it'd be a nice tool to have someday, but I just don't think today's the day. I think we have other priorities, but it's up to council.
So if we could table it-
Can you hear me or not?
Go ahead, Scott.
Can I be heard?
Yes.
My comment is, and I don't want to take anything away from our police department, you know, they have an incredibly difficult job to do, but I hear people in town, they say they don't see the police on their street. And I come home from work, sometimes I get home, I'm home at, you know, 1, 2, 3 o'clock in the morning, and honestly, I haven't seen anyone driving around. And just the benefit for this, even if we did it for one year, when a resident on Palmer or a resident on Barclay or anywhere else, it says, especially in the summertime when these cars are getting broken into, you know, I understand, you know, to lock your car and take your valuables and stuff out, but there also needs to be a little proactive to this in addition to that with a presence driving up and down the streets. And if people are complaining that they never see a, you know, a patrol car go down their street, we have this system in line, we can, you know, they could come down and they could talk to the chief, and the chief can say, well, this car was down your street three times last night. I mean, I don't know what the mileage is on our police cars, like what the average, how many miles it would take to drive around the whole borough. But there's got to be a way that we can show the residents, you know, even while they're sleeping, that, yes, someone did drive down your street. And this would be the easiest way to show them, that you do, you know, we are driving down your street, you know, you don't see it, you're sleeping or whatever, but we're trying the best that we can. So I think it would be advantage, you know, it's an advantage to show that, yeah, this is the thing. And the whole thing, there's tons of companies that have it. I mean, I had it installed in, all the UPS vehicles had it installed, you know, 10, 15 years ago. And we had guys that worked with that were against it and whatnot. And our union people, we had our yearly meeting, and our union people said, listen, you want, okay, if you're doing the right thing, you have nothing to worry about. If you're not doing the right thing, you got a couple weeks to clean it up. So it's, I don't see a negative, a negative part of it. It can only be beneficial. When someone comes up to me or if I'm, you know, running to somebody at 7-Eleven or Ben's Deli, and they say, you know, I haven't seen a cop down my street in a year, okay? I can say, well, let me look at that for you. Then I can go, if somebody sees him, I can say, he actually had the cop down your street three times last night. So that's where my angle with this is. Thank you.
Mr. Parker?
Yes?
I thought this was to track them outside of the borough, not to track their, every movement during their shift. So I guess I was, I guess I did misunderstand.
Well, we're not, we're not tracking every movement on their shift. We're not like, not like you're sitting, you know, and I don't know the ins and outs of who will be able to see this. Quite frankly, I don't even want access to it. If I need to, if someone complains to me about that they don't see the police, I don't want to be able to pull my phone out and show them. I don't want to have anything to do with it. I want to either direct them to go down and speak to the chief, or I'll go down and talk to the chief for them and say, chief, this person complained on this address and complained about this. And, you know, as far as out of the borough goes, I mean, we could put a thing on it that it could set an alert off because unless they're going on a call out of the borough, okay, them cars should not be going out of the borough. I mean, I understand if you're gonna, if you're, you know, if you're following somebody or somebody that, you know, is out of the borough, then you turn around. If you end up by Wendy's, then you turn around and come back down Trent Avenue. You know, if you're following somebody down foot off your avenue, you get to the old corner concrete, you turn around and you come back. You know, you, you know, or naturally, if you go over to Jersey, it'd be dangerous to turn, if you take the trip over to Cal Street Bridge, you really don't belong in Jersey, but you never know. You come back on the other bridge, but it's not like we're tracking them, like actively watching where they're going. It's more of a cover-your-butt thing. I mean, if vehicle GPS wasn't a cover-your-butt thing, it wasn't, it wasn't, no one would use it. You know, there's companies out there, every commercial company now practically has GPS in their vehicle. If they're sitting there and they're paying somebody to watch what they're doing, God bless them, but we weren't, that's nothing, that's not something that we're going to do. I don't, I don't see, I don't think, I personally don't, I think it's something we can use our advantage. We could say, no, this is going on, that's going on, you know? Let's say the Public Works guy, somebody calls and says, I got a problem with a water leak or something like that. Oh, they never showed up. Yes, they did. They were parked in front of your house for an hour, they showed up. You know, you can, we've had that at UPS. People said, you didn't knock on my door. Then they get, they get a picture emailed, it's just, here's your house, here's the truck that was parked in front of your house. Don't say we didn't knock on your door. Totally, it's so easy, cover your butt with it. That's my date. Thank you.
Can I just clarify a couple things?
May I follow up real quick on what Mr. Robinson said, just to add something with that?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, and to follow up with him, Mr. Robinson said, yeah, a lot of these GPS units are used by municipalities, as Mr. Robinson said, as a sort of a defense mechanism. When I was in Allentown, I had two cases where I had to use the GPS tracking to prove that either, A, it would involve snowplows that were, A, the trucks were there doing the plowing, or in case of a lawsuit that one truck where someone claimed they were run off the road by a snowplow truck and, you know, damaged our property, wasn't there. So these are a tool that go beyond just looking at location for employee data, but also protect the borough and, as Mr. Yeager described, know where your machinery and vehicles are.
And if I could add a couple things, Mr. Parker, the GPS data would not be available or accessible to council or members of the public if we were to do this. And to answer Councilwoman Sherlock's question, the GPS device will tell you anywhere on Earth that vehicle has been, the time of day, the speed it was traveling, whether it was idle or not, the weather conditions at the time. I mean, there's a whole host of information available.
I understand that, but I just didn't know that that was its main purpose. I actually have a home on my car, so I have all those things that you just mentioned, but I just, I thought it was more about abuse than anything else.
Well, it also, like if one of our cars were in an accident and somebody- Well, it also, like, if one of our cars were in an accident and somebody says, oh, they were speeding, this would say, no, they weren't.
Yes. That's what Mr. Holbert was referring to by the defense mechanism. If somebody calls or there's a vehicle accident, they say the vehicle was speeding, you know, the data is there, it's backed up, it's stored, you look up the date and the time and the location, and it tells you that.
So it actually would help the borough?
Yes.
I mean, from personal experience, we've been using GPS and timed responses at my job for 15 years now. And they're used to prove that a unit was on scene within the required 7 minutes and 59 seconds as per our contract with the city. They're also used to give the crews the best and fastest route to a call. So there, you know, there's those aspects of it. I mean, I know this system's not that sophisticated, but they are out there and they, you know. All right.
Scott, do you know if this system would be capable of real-time monitoring and displaying it via HTML? In a sense of what I'm thinking is PennDOT offers programs to your constituents that shows them people where the plow trucks are, basically in live feeds. So one of the big complaints we get when it does snow, it hasn't recently, is the plow trucks, I hear, I don't see a plow truck, the plow truck didn't go down my street, the plow truck went down my street 16 times.
Yeah, the department head who has access to the data, I believe, can see the vehicles in real time. But again, we would not be making that available to the public.
We shouldn't, if we do it.
But if somebody called in, you could say, yeah, they're...
Yeah, if somebody called in and made a complaint, we would have the data from that vehicle to show where it's been, when, how long, all that, what speed it was traveling.
All right, anybody else?
One last question. So if we voted yes on this today, and then we sit down to do the budget, and then we find that, you know, the budget is so out of whack and we don't want to do it, can we then vote it out?
Just not fund it.
I believe you can change your mind anytime you want, up until the date I sign the contract.
Okay. Okay. So can we say that this wouldn't start until January of 20, like, past?
You can. You can say this is for 2021.
Okay.
So we're going to amend it to include not...
I don't know if you need to amend it. If it's council's consensus that you don't want me to initiate a contract to do it until 2021, I just won't do it until then. But if you're more comfortable amending the motion, you can do that as well.
I think we...
No, I'm good.
I think we trust you. All right, we have a motion and a second. Do a roll call on this. Virginia, please.
Yes. Councilman Bowers?
Yes.
Councilwoman Drysbox?
No.
Councilwoman Halaho?
Yes.
Councilman Parker?
Yes.
Councilman Paul?
No.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherlock?
No.
Councilman Yeager?
No.
It's tied, it'll have to go to the mayor to break the tie.
Knock it down. It's not equipment. It's not doing everything we needed to do.
All right, moving on to 9K. Call for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the borough engineer to submit a grant application to PennDOT in the amount of $280,000 for the installation of new sidewalks and ADA ramps along West Bridge Street from Althea Avenue to Cox Avenue in order to provide better pedestrian access to downtown. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second, discussion?
Yes, I have a question. This is something that we, the borough, had considered a number of years ago. And it ended up being an astronomical cost, because it's not just about your sidewalks. And maybe John Later can speak to this. It had to do with the piping and the water and everything that's right on the, you know, in the right-of-way area. So it would have involved taking out all of the water pipes and all of that. So before we spend or look for $280,000, I think it's important that it get assessed to make sure that this is a doable project. I can't speak to who would actually make that decision, but I would think an engineer should do some pre-testing. And I don't know if they have.
I can't answer a specific question related to the location of utilities, but I can tell you that the borough has applied for this grant previously for the same amount. We can look into the utility question, but there is a deadline looming on this grant. So it's up to council.
Okay. Yeah, which brings me to another question. When we have reapply for a grant, is the charge the same full charge?
No, 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 it's substantially less because the data's already available, it just has to be repackaged.
Okay.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Is there a chance that if it is found that there's some kind of issue under the sidewalk, could this same grant be used in another location for the same item?
That's possible, but the grant funding agency would have to allow it to be retasked.
Okay.
Or the other option would be to use these funds to remediate that and just lessen the amount of sidewalks.
It's true, too.
Is this something that needs to happen next year?
Oh, it's not gonna happen next year.
But I mean, you know, like, is this something that we have to vote on now?
Well, you have to vote on now if you want to meet the application deadline.
The deadline.
Is this something that happens every year, or?
Yeah, the window is open for this particular funding opportunity, so that's why we brought it to you. But it closes in a couple of weeks.
Mr. Mitchell, could you repeat what Mike Yeager had asked or mentioned?
I'm sorry, Mike Yeager, what did you ask?
I had asked if it's found that there's something that prohibits the ability to fix the sidewalks, can it just be used in a different location for the same project? And the answer was, if the grant approval body says yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Sidewalks going more than six inches into the ground.
I have a question. Okay, so if we do that area on Bridge Street, will that pretty much cover all of Marsville with sidewalks on the state highways?
No. No, there's a much smaller gap on West Pennsylvania, excuse me, on West Trenton Avenue. And there's a gap on...
On South Pennsylvania.
There's several gaps. There's another one on Central, which is, of course, our street.
That's not a state highway.
Right, yeah. But this is the largest one. That's why we are applying for it first. It's the largest and most expensive.
Okay.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm there. Anybody opposed? All right, motion passes eight zero. 9L, call for a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the borough engineer to submit a grant application to PennDOT in the amount of $150,000 to supplement a previous grant award to improve the pedestrian and traffic signals at the intersection of Pennsylvania Avenue and Trenton Avenue. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second.
I'm sorry, who seconded? Mr. Bowers, I had you as the mover. So who moved?
Eileen.
Eileen, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mitchell, on this, we just talked previously during the bills, that we spent $32,000 replacing parts due to an accident. When we replace the parts, I assume we buy the latest and greatest technology that will work with what's there?
Yes.
Is there anything?
It's new. Yes.
Is there anything that would transfer?
We weren't gonna mention that.
I'm just assuming now maybe we can buy more with less money now because we've replaced some of it.
Well, that really was just the control box, essentially the brain of controlling the intersection. Everything else is still the antique, ancient stuff, so.
All right.
Mr. Parker, I have a question. What was the grant, the original grant that we received for this traffic light? I can't remember. Wasn't it just recently?
Yeah, it was $200,000 and some odd thousand. I don't remember the exact amount.
So almost $400,000 just for the traffic light?
Just for, to do one intersection, yes.
But it's not just for the light itself, it's actually for ramps or just the traffic light?
It's all the traffic and pedestrian crossing devices.
Okay.
So it's all the signals, the poles, the hardware, the software, the wiring?
Yep.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes eight zero. 10, other business. Do we have any other business?
Do you want to let that lady speak? Sitting here? She had some public comment.
All right. Is there anything you wanted to add, ma'am? Come to the podium.
You could just speak.
You might have to turn the microphone on. You can pull it out of that stand, you won't hurt it. And if you could state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Melissa Johnson. I live at 117 Park Avenue. And I heard what council person said about the signs on Park. It's ironic, just this morning, I was taking a walk. And not only are the signs that say that the park... Oh, sorry.
Yeah, even though the room is empty, if you could speak directly into the mic, even if you pull it out of the stand, because the members participating by Zoom can only hear that way.
Is this better?
Much better, thank you.
The signs that are there are small and they're not lit at night, and they're in the middle of the greenway. So there's an entrance to the dyke closer to Bridge than the stairwells. It's like a ramp. There's no sign right there. And the one that you get to before you get to the alley between the zeros to the 100 block, those signs are really small, they're not lit at night. And we do hear a lot of comments at night, people being out there. I don't know if it's because they don't know, because they don't see the signs, or if they're just doing something they shouldn't be doing. But either way, the signs are very small. And it's just ironic that I happen to be here today. We just made that comment this morning, that the signs are not really that visible. So that was my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
During the daytime, where you can see them a little bit better, but at nighttime they're very difficult to see. So I don't know if we can put lights up at the top of the stairwells.
Mr. Parker, I'm gonna ask that you repeat or just summarize what that was just said, because...
Yeah, thank you. I didn't hear a word she said.
No, me neither.
Basically, she agreed that the signs were difficult to see and that they are clustered in the middle of the street, they're not lit, they're very small, and that also...
What signs?
The entrance to the dyke on the Bridge Street side by the Trenton Makes Bridge has no sign at all. I think I pretty...
You mean regarding walking on the dyke?
Being in the dyke after hours, yes. Being on parked property after hours.
Well, it's my understanding, the reason it's not lit is for the same reason the canal's not lit, because you don't want people there. I mean, they're closed. So...
Okay. All right.
I think if you put lights there, you're gonna encourage people to go up there.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, put lights there and light a sign, I think, are different things. But all right, we're gonna go from other business, since there is none, to borough officials to continue what we were discussing.
Like to read something?
Head me.
... manager, council president, and borough council members. Due to health reasons, I must turn in my resignation effective October 31, 2020. It has been a pleasure to serve the first ward and the borough for 11 years. I'm sorry that I cannot complete my term. I have worked with some great people while sitting up here. However, it's been quite a challenge at times. I have always had the best interest of the residents every time I voted. I am hoping that whoever fills my vacancy will do what is best for our town. We need to move forward with bringing revenue into our borough. I hope you seriously consider McGrath's proposal. I feel that it will be a great start to a better town. We will be able to bring new and better businesses into town. I wish everyone well as you continue moving forward.
Sorry to hear that, Eileen, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
It's been an honor serving with you.
Thank you, you, too.
So did Eileen just resign?
She did.
Is that what I heard?
Yes.
You heard it.
Effective the end of the month.
You heard it here first, effective October 31.
Well, thank you, Eileen.
Thank you.
For your years spent.
Anyone else? All right.
Mr. Parker, if I can say two things, please?
Sure.
By the floor?
Yes. Yes.
Just, I'm not gonna read the whole letter, but if you remember way back, we asked Mr. Mitchell to send out something to PICO about, you know, the electric going out far too often in town. They did respond. I just want to mention that they're looking to put in what they're calling reclosers. And these reclosers will help to eliminate long extended periods of time when the electric is out. It has something to do with, I guess it cuts it off even if someone hits a tree or a pole or whatever. So I, there's no timeline when that will happen, but I guess it's a good thing. I don't know if Mr. Mitchell can elaborate more on that, but that's what the letter said. So that's, I get people asking all the time about that. And then I guess someone, maybe Ted was gonna just make the announcement about the next public hearing on November 16, when we discuss the budget. It'll be a public hearing for the budget on November 16. And then the final budget will be December 21. But of course, we're meeting before then. As a council, we're meeting to discuss the budget.
Yes.
It's my understanding, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That's all.
Anyone else?
Can I just thanks Public Works for cleaning up the corner of Philadelphia Avenue and South Pennsylvania Avenue? It looks fantastic, as opposed to what it did look like.
Anyone else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night.
Come back anytime.
Hey, Scott. Scott, are you still on?
Hey, Scott. Yeah, I'm still here. What's up?
No, actually, I'm sorry, I was talking to Scott Holbert. Are you still on?
Yeah, I'm still here. Yes.
Can you hold on for a phone call in about two minutes?
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Do you put the agenda up on the website before the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be on the borough website.
It's under the public portal. There's a tab for government, I believe, and then it drops down and it's under public portal.